Hi, that's five O. Thank you for the 940 library consider declaring a criminal bid of asset number nine three zero two zero six to zero six and the section of the county library has certified and authorized the county librarian to proceed with disposal of the vehicle used as a resource of true county approved vendor list.
I can't be around the library and listen to speakers here. We're requesting this item be removed because the ownership of the vehicle is in question now with the bar of motion.
Okay. Thank you. Item B, consider accepting a library services and technology act grant award in the amount of $1,293.75 from the California State Library to pay for 75% of the cost of a 12-month subscription to tutor.com and authorize county library to sign the services and technology act financial claim on behalf of the board supervisor source submitted to the California State Library.
I'm sorry, before you go to that, could you make a motion, okay?
Yeah.
Hold it.
Oh, you hold it. Sorry, your ears clean. This is for the tutor.com online homework. It provides homework to sessions for students during first grade to 12th grade. We're asking permission. It's L S D A.
Hasn't been fully utilized?
This is the second year. The first year they gave us several, this is 150 last year sessions. They did several sessions we did with last year, we didn't do ours in very few of those. So this is more in line.
Oh, you mean last year had a lot more sessions?
Yeah.
Sessions. Oh, okay.
And so paid for by the way last year.
So this one you're kind of paying for what we use last year will increase.
The library. The marketing that the schools, are we making the schools aware of the fact availability?
Yes.
And they're still not being used? I know the schools have tutor classes themselves.
Yes. If we use, I don't know how much it's being used at this time. Last year I think it was over a thousand they gave us and we didn't use that much on this one, but this year is more aligned with what we will be using.
Okay. Okay, hold on.
Can kids also do this from home?
Yes. They need a library card.
Okay. I'd like to understand how it's being marketed to schools and what the plan is to market this one. So let me ask them to take them back and explain actually, and I'd like to have a conversation number of less than before I move forward with this. I don't understand the point of this. We've got people who use it, but we're still asking for 500 slots.
Hundred fifty.
Hundred fifty. Hundred fifty slots, I mean.
And is available at all libraries, is that correct?
Yes.
Good.
I'd still like to see the marketing. I understand what the marketing is.
Supervisor, Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Carter, Van, Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, that's five O. Item C, consider accepting library services and technology act grant award in the amount of $7,927 from the California State Library to support staff costs for the library adult literacy program and operate county library to sign the services and technology act financial claim on behalf of the board supervisor source submitted to the California State Library.
This plan will provide $6,107.00 to support the library to lay this coordinator and $1,500 to support.
I guess a lot of them actually choose to not kind of dial off and then we fund it. Well, I guess they have the grant funding position.
Yeah.
Second. Yeah, maybe again, maybe the previous item. It's actually not.
Hold on.
Supervisor, Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Carter, Van?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, that's five O. Item C, consider approving the increase in cost to industry by $6 per certificate to cover a $5 30 fee plus an additional 70 cents to cover administrative cost facility in which is bringing the cost of qualified sanitary certificates to $71.65.
My staff issued certified sanitary certificates, which means that we got the field inspector Mari's staff that we need to be asked for to other countries and ensure that they meet the requirements of other countries. We started to see the federal government is getting a fee and how the state wants it to be also. And it's mandated fee under California Federal Regulation Section 46 ZU.
I can get it, don't you?
And they have said if we don't charge it, it's just going to come out of what we're charging from the public plan. So I would like to add that $5 30 fee to current cost of our qualified sanitary certificates. We did a study and came up with this new program, the administrative cost when we're getting this feedback in state will cost us about 70 cents to our department for a qualified sanitary certificate. So I've asked for the $5.30 and the 70 cents administrative for our department, which will bring the total of our qualified sanitary certificates to $71.
Go for.
I have a question. Was this something that recently changed in state statute or are they pulling it out from something that already exists?
They're pulling it from something that already existed that we want to try to use.
Yeah, yeah. So did the state found what we call related, we are customers or our brokers? Are our state customers?
Roll.
Supervisor, Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Carter, Van, Van?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye. Item B, consider operating the county administer seal the rates of nature to collect device administrative fees and begin saying to DMS as per type of four business regulations, Division nine, Division of Measurement Standards, Department of Food and Air Culture, Chapter three, device one article three, annual device administrative fee. This is.
This is more of the same. Our department currently charges what's called a noise registration fee, which is your commercial business and let's say the scale for gas pumps. We do testing on that and we charge a registration fee on a yearly basis. The CDFA Division of Measurement Standards lost many millions of dollars in funding and so they put forth Assembly Bill 120 and they will be collecting monies back from our device users and work to fund the metrology lab, the technical lab, and our defense area specialists. So there's basically what they've come up with, another mandated fee. This is new. This is a new one, not an old one today. This is the new one that they came up with and they did work with industry, had the industry sourcing on this and there will be a surcharge per device. Let's say for instance, if you have a modern platform scale, your fee will increase by $8. That $8 will go to the state. My department will keep 15% of that $8 for administrative costs to the department. Very similar to last one.
Did the association work on?
We did. We also worked with it, yes.
Were you agreeable to it, the association overall because of the 13%?
No, we were grateful to it because of the metrology lab. If we don't have the state certify the weights that we use out in field for our testing, then we have to go to private industry to try to get those weights certified and then it would drive the cost to the county and we even have to increase the loan for device registration through the state fees we'll pay for ourselves. So that's why we went ahead and agreed with this and worked with it and we came up with the amount for device, the fruit of possum on this water.
I have a question.
Would my partner second my order? Go on.
Supervisor, Mr. Murray? Carter, Van?
No.
Marshall?
No.
And Evans.
Aye. Item three D, I'd say consider accepting an RFP for airport land use compatibility plans update for the Wilson County Airport as follows, in the month for $82,000, even further award on RFP percent.
That in October came to the board and we sent out an RFP for the new ALUCP for the airport. We received back this one proposal at $82,000. The funding that we were to receive from Caltrans was only the amount of $45,000. We've worked with Caltrans over the last several months and they have agreed to increase the funding to cover the cost of this ALUCP. And so we're getting something back. We worked with the other, the other way this works for us on this, but I think they realized that the $45,000 that we asked for was not enough based on the ways that we provided them, it would actually cost to do this. We are waiting for the, everything to come in writing to us by the state before we ask for a resolution, but I wanted to proceed, move forward and accept and award this bid that we received from you.
Move my partner.
What's compatibility, is it compatible with the airport compatible with Caltrans for 67 years?
Yes. That's one question I ask them. We haven't done an airport land use compatibility plan since 1995, although probably hasn't changed much around the airport since 1995. But the airport land use compatibility might not have to do with the developments that are going on around the airport and possibly future expansion of the airport and future developments in and around the airport. And we need to throw a plan to ensure that any land use that happens in that zone around the airport that is compatible with the airport. Airports that haven't done these in the past have actually had a lot of problems and they, in some cases, have to close down. So I think it's important to us to do this for the future, but as you say, there's really not much happening right now, but we may not have to do this again for another 15, 12 years.
On the flip side, shouldn't we ask any future development in the area of the airport that they do a compatibility study rather than we do a compatibility study?
Well, the division, Caltrans Division of Aeronautics is requiring that we do this and they're paying for us to do this. So I guess we're being on the forefront and being ahead of some, someone's kind of along.
I'm just looking, I see you backing back there, but when we issue a permit for a business to construct in, adjacent to the airport, would it be appropriate for us to try to recoup fees or at least administration costs? We're doing all these plans and things that Caltrans is requiring because the plan is affecting the people that are going to develop and it seems like it's backwards to me.
I think it's, I think it's both protecting the airport and putting requirements on, on businesses or the development must come in next to the airport. I think it works.
But what end result, what hammer are we going to have to tell people they can't put a high rise at the end of the airport?
It has to do with, we've already worked with, recently we worked with Premier Mushrooms and they came to us based on their new expansion and we had to look at the aerial zones around the airport that they weren't going to be destructing the flight path and we worked with them to ensure that the building that they were expanding took within the, within the current county and the AW, the airport land use compatibility plan both. And so if, so if they wouldn't have wanted to approach on that zone, we would not have allowed them to do that.
Supervisor, I could answer that answer. The county's general land use authority for the unincorporated area, which includes the airport, is our authority to check for consistency. If I want to put a 40, 40-story tower there, odds are both Mr. Damianno's department and Mr. Hackens is going to say that's not really consistent with the general plans in effect in the airport land use compatibility plan. So the general land use authority that we possess in the county will give us the authority to make sure that whatever is proposed is consistent or made consistent as necessary.
I just think it's a lot of money, eighty-two dollars, a lot of money to tell people they can't put a high rise at the end of the airport.
Well, and I guess I would look at it from a different aspect. If this study is done and an air and assuming has to be done, go along, good Steve. So I would look at it from the exact opposite. As a business comes in or the measurement comes to ask for this type of variance or change, we already have the document in place to say yes or no, so we will not be requiring them, Steve, this is for you, to have an additional study done because we have the study already done.
As it relates to airport land use, you're actually correct. I just wanted to answer Chris Marsh's comments, one that the state law requires the study to be, to be in place. The airport land use commission has its own set of body of authority given it and, and it's appropriate for them to do the study as much as, it probably, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to require, me to tell the developer that he's required to, to update our general plan and fund it because he wants to build a big house and likewise, it wouldn't be appropriate for airport manager to require somebody that wanted to develop out in that area to fund that study. But where does the final authority resides? Actually, compatibility studies for airports typically, what they're addressing is protecting the future of that airport from high-density residential developments, particularly the, what they fear within the two-mile radius and they like to keep down to one unit per five acres typically, but it does encourage commercial and industrial development within that area. And so a document like this, even what supervisor banned this, maybe would help support and encourage that kind of personal industrial development of this certain plan. And another point too, I'm, I'm, well, and as kind of council, so the final authority doesn't decide, the airport commission of the planning, the land use authority, the board, and it's the board that will keep that, that high rise to develop the.
One of the areas of the general land use law where has a kind of fee to supervisor Marshall, which could be done if there is a specific plan. The government code allows for people who come in on the heels of the specific plan for the county or the state or the city. It costs us X dollars to do this specific land use. You folks who are coming in with projects after that's done are going to pay a share of that cost and that's how the county or the city would get reimbursed for the cost of this specific. But this is obviously not a specific.
Just like giving you $2,000, a lot of money for a home for smaller, rural environment and I'm a taxpayer and that's where those dollars are coming from.
And I did ask Caltrans that based on the fact that we are not developing and there's not a lot going on, if we could not do this, then incidentally, if required, we'd do this. So I agree with them.
At least they've stepped up.
Yes.
Hold on.
We will be paying approximately 10%.
Hold on.
Supervisor, Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Carter, Van?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, that's five O. Item C, consider approving the increase in cost to industry by $6 per certificate to cover a qualified sanitary certificate to $71.00. This is.
I guess they have the fee and you don't. Yeah, and you know, it's really interesting. This year when we had the falcked duck show up, we figured there was about 15,000 additional visits because of the rare duck thing. We had people, even from visitors from Europe were coming to the states to be bird watching them. Here on these forums, this, the old, this rare duck and, you know, these refugees where they came. So I talked to people from Sweden and some of Germany, but anyway, we thought about doing a fee thing where people can use their cell phone and our public stack, we're looking into that where people can, we might have a little thing that says please go into the refuge. Because we are pretty limited in our staff and our budget. Yesterday I talked to our budget administrator and she said, we're way in the hole, we can't do sort of gravel, widen the tour route, that's kind of narrowing that one section out into two regions. And she says we might have to cut back on gravel and things, but we're not prioritizing that. I think we're going to get it done, but just to have a phone number where people can punch in and donate. Last year with all those visits, the 15,000 visits to see the rare duck, people were saying, boy, I wish you had something where we could drop 20 bucks in. They said we paid, you know, several hundred dollars to get air flight out here to see the duck, we could at least fix something. We'll get into that.
Yeah, I would agree, I know, as I indicated, often visit your refuge. If there's somebody stopping on the road that looking at a particular bird.
Or be around.
It stops everywhere. So it's going to turn out to be nice.
Do you plan on putting a few more trans in and widening that section between the bridges?
There is a wonderful facility and I know you've improved it in the last couple of years with restaurants and information areas.
Yeah, nicely accurate.
But it costs them.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Birds like to go there. We'll put it, we'll put it to the board downstairs. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Eric.
Thank you. item C, land in the building, consider accepting proposals for long maintenance at the Plaza, Williams Library, Princeton Library, Park as follows. Well, we have a whole list of the, the, the. Good morning, Chair, and welcome to the board. We, an outreach to name proposals for the four locations, we put out flyers, stamp banners, posted and advertised and, and these are the results.
Everybody's license on it?
Yes. Well, I will presume so. I didn't get paperwork that we requested in the RFP from the last Moore Land State. I appreciate the fact that we sent off looking, she is all done. Others did derive the citation that we're all due.
Steve, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I do. I would recommend the Oregon Wayland.
I'm sorry, I'm going to accept this.
Oh, second.
And these are all monthly, right?
Yes, they are.
Supervisor, Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Van?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, that's five O. I'd say consider awarding the proposal for long maintenance at the Plaza, Williams Library, Princeton Library, Park. Further, director plan, director plan building to return at a later date on current. Sorry. The recommendation for the RFP.
Yeah.
Sorry. You know, I've gone through this pretty extensively and broken it down and, and read what was submitted and I have to, and some of these, I don't know, in first grade or the class parents, so it's really basic, I'll just submit it and all numbers and, and with that, I would recommend Oregon Wayland State to be awarded contract for the RFP library, library and plaza. On Princeton Library, I would offer two options to the board, that one, accept the county of the landscapes, cemental, their proposal for direct staff to allow and try that particular job separately once again.
Was there a reason why the first one didn't include Princeton?
I'm not sure and of course I.
Right. I don't think there's.
Right. I would like to find out and, but, but, and we did send these RFPs out separately. We sent out four RFPs, so you can.
They were separate.
Yes. And so why the one or well, it didn't include Princeton, I'm not sure. And it may be, come down to nothing more than inconvenience to business and I think that's reflected in, in this twice Princeton.
That's something we should maybe ask him about it.
I agree. At least ask him maybe to get them out. If he sent four of them out. London, worth.
I'll move for staff recommendation, which is on our way for Plaza and further that heap and wire went down and bring back, so not everyone to Princeton.
Move. Marshall? Thank you. Second, my order. Hold on.
Supervisor, Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Van?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, that's five O. Name is Steve. Item C, discussion direction plus lines regarding building permit fees and planning fees. Yes, Chair. As you know, I've been going over the fees for building permit, plan check thoroughly and doing some research with other jurisdictions as well and, and how they approach it. With PUP 26, which was approved until 2010 and, and was wanting to affect that settlement, reading that, I included just a brief, to take a blurb for your event in the board report and, and the. And, uh, it may be come down to nothing more than inconvenience to visitors. And I think that's reflected in, uh, because twice Princeton.
That's something we should maybe ask him about it.
I agree. At least ask him maybe to get them out. If he sent four of them out. London, boards.
I'll move for staff recommendation, which is on the real life landscape for Park of Williams and Plaza. And further, that he can acquire one down and bring back, uh, so not everyone can do Princeton.
Move. Marshall.
Thank you.
Second, Andrew. Move.
Supervisors in the room. Carter, Dan, Martha.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye, that's five O. Name is Steve. A, uh, item C, discussion direction plus line for regarding building permit fees and planning check fees. Yes, Chair. As you know, I've, uh, been going over the fees for building permit, plan check thoroughly. And doing some, uh, uh, research with, uh, other jurisdictions as well and, and how they approach it. With PUP 26, which was approved until 2010 and, and was wanting to affect that settlement. Reading that, I included just a brief, should take a blurb for your benefit in the board report. And, and the three charges, uh, uh, the charges of co-both ask a specific benefit, specific government service was provided. And the reasonable regulatory cost of the local government. All three of those conditions are met with the manner which the methodology in which we are currently using, which is table 1A of the 2001 California Building Codes. We've been using that, uh, since 2001. The board has noted, uh, to the court, uh, in November 2010, you approved the California Building Standards for 2010. We continue to use table 1A of 2001 standards, uh, for permanent purposes. The board did not approve by specific reference in the adopting order of appendix L of the 2010 Building Codes. So we did not, we did not implement those. We continue to use table 1A. It's time and, uh, that I, uh, felt that it's appropriate that I come to the board and have the board formally direct me to make the choice and determine by ordinance, uh, your choice of either table of 1A that you have been using or appendix L of the order through the 2000 Penning Building Codes. I should note that appendix L will result in, uh, let's see. Oh, well, first of all, I should note that right now with the building permit fees and plan check fees that we have in, in place, we, uh, it results in approximately 70% recovery rate from our actual expenditures. And that's where proposition 26 states in that third item that we charge those for reasonable regulatory profit to the government creation last term. We're not here to make a profit. We're here to provide a service. And the cost incurred by the public should only be up to and no more than what that service costs. Well, we're charging, uh, 30, 70%, uh, we're charging up to 70% of what that effort costed. The public's been benefiting by, of course, the percentage deduction. And so it's resulted in a deficit in the department. I'm using here 2001, 2012, uh, for example. In addition, on the plan check fees, we, uh, are, we set those review fees equal to 65% of the permit fees. Now, in doing my research, I found in other jurisdictions, they set their, uh, uh, plan, uh, plan review fee equal to 75% of their permit fees. Uh, and that is typically, uh, an average across the state. So, uh, to answer, to address the issue of, of our fees and how fair it is to equal. It's, uh, the, the public has been benefiting from it. That is the advocates champion. But conversely, uh, you know, there is a deficit considered. My recommendation, although I'm, I, I get it right there, we three recommendations, A, B, and C. What I would ask is that either, uh, option A or option B, that you do please do a status recommendation to include the revision provided, uh, the $63 for, uh, for the building inspection fee. That really is a minimum. We use time log and sample distances and we, and we've been using that number for as long as I've been there. And, uh, and the actual, and average value of the actual table, uh, 1A is sufficiently less than that $63 figure. So, uh, we gotta set it up and best number we did and we'd like to do that. And if option B, uh, the same.
I can, I can help with this, Steve, in this chair. That the fee is all driven by the cost of the evaluation of project.
Correct.
Is that a fair assumption to use? Because let's say for instance, uh, you have a valuation of a project that costs $2,000 and you're recovering a fee for $24, of $24. And you have a valuation of $40,000 and you're blocking $487. Is there that much more time, staff time allocated to the higher value project?
Typically, if something's, uh, well, if a house comes in at, uh, a hundred thousand, a house comes in at 400,000, uh, I, I can guarantee it, uh, it's a, it's a bigger house, larger house, more to it. And it does require additional plan check time and, and, and additional, uh, uh, inspection time to cover that. The difference in square footage and, uh, the fee.
So the valuation is a fair criteria?
It is, it is a fair criteria. And I know I like to qualify that. It is a fair criteria for the purposes of what we're studying, plan check and building permit fees. Typically for single family homes. And it's, and it's quite a common, uh, methodology that's used and, uh, among very jurisdictions. Uh, and it's also one that is provided for in the 2010 California Building Standards, but that's the base of its evaluation. Where I would qualify it is in the area of, I've talked to an authority for, in the area of solar facilities. And that is something that I, uh, got a stack on my desk and I'm working my way through the third year. And that I would like to.
So we have the flexibility to do that?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
All right.
So Steve, um, exhibit A, the only change that we're making is assigning that fee to the dollar to $1,700 structure valuation. Exactly, it's written in because it didn't come through our.
No, and that, that number, uh, staff recommendation includes on revision, one, $1,700, two, each, $3. Yeah, that's what the building inspection charge to go out. Uh, and, uh, or no, that's about, that's, that is the building, but, uh, Steve, I'm sorry if it come through.
So that's the existing fee. It's just, it's handwritten in there.
Yes, that's.
Okay, I just made it to the.
And it was handwritten because that was the one that, uh, that's why I'm asking you to look at if you should select that one.
I guess, yeah, I see that you believe by your.
Yes.
It makes sense. It's a structure, maybe, five hundred structures.
I appreciate that.
So exhibit A is not raising any of the.
No, no, there's no raising of the, uh, fees with table 1A. And, uh, and I should, uh, tell me too, that when you look at exhibit C, you will see that, uh, table 1A is higher than appendix L in the first few categories, but less in the upper, uh, price range of, uh, bottom three categories. And most of our permits.
Low to $25. So that's just a scale, not just a $25. He's writing $1,700. No, no, I said to drive, it's not cheaper. But it's, um, I'm saying last year is not expensive. What's your, then, question? First year's.
Well, the first three items, 5,000, 10,000, 50,000 in table 1A is, is more expensive. That's what we're currently charging than in appendix L. However, when you take that 100,000, 3.6, and 500,000, then appendix L is, uh, more expensive for the applicant.
Which, um, which category, valuation category, would you say that you have a majority of applications falling in the $50,000, 100, 3.6?
In the lower three categories.
In the 100, 500,000 category?
Uh, in the 5,000, 10,000, 50,000, 10,000.
Less than 100,000.
Yes, less than 100,000.
You'd say a majority of your applications fall in the less than 100, 500,000 category?
That's where we get our electrical permits or hot water heaters. Probably, uh, few more.
So we've done the analysis, um, kind of what you want to do is to which, which fee structure would come closer to, you know, in your 75,000? Reading your thoughts and choosing.
Neither one will, 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 or neither one will bring a 100% recovery rate. And, and, and I've thought about that. And what I would like to do in recommending, in recommending is option C would at least raise our plan review to 75% of the, uh, permit fees to recapture some of that. But with this economy and this time, I, I, I cannot recommend raising the permit and project fees to try to capture a 100%.
I, I would like that you recognize that, that would be, you know, raising taxes and bringing things on this is that would be special. Uh, which, which, A or L would be better than the apartment as far as?
My, I guess my.
Yeah, the idea what we're beginning with the next two years.
Well, the next three years, I think.
Let's say five years.
Well, I, boy, I'm bad at reading. I tried and I thought we would have been in full recovery by now. So, but certainly over the next three years' time, uh, I don't see us much better than we are today. I have some hope, but, uh, so I would, if you're asking my recommendation.
Yeah.
Uh, I would recommend, uh, uh, option A and include option C to at least get a permit, uh, plan check of, uh, an additional 10% on the, uh, of the building permit.
I'm sorry, you lost.
You take the valuation of building permit, it's two.
No, I know, but.
And, and then we, and then we, uh.
Raise the plan check.
And then we multiply it by 65% and that's the, uh, plan check fee. So the valuation does drive it. So if we have something like a, oh, let's say, uh, and a vitamin a dollar expansion at ADM for work. Then of course, the plan check fee for that is going to be substantially higher than for a single family home. But then you're looking at 70, 80 pages of, of, you know, drawings that the inspector has to go through. And sometimes more, uh, some projects, it might be over, you know, a couple of hundred pages. And we've been fortunate that we have been getting to large projects in. But option A is my recommendation.
With option C?
With.
Which is the plan check review fees, 75%?
Yes, because it is a balancing act. I, I, you know, we are a deficit and yet we would like to narrow it.
That would take us from the 70% that you were referencing earlier up to the 75%?
No, uh, it would, it would, it would, it would raise the recovery rate of, uh, some, a few percentage points. It would be better, uh, it would give us maybe, maybe a 70. I haven't done those percentage projections, but, but it would, uh, it would increase the recovery rate percentage. What it specifically would be, I don't, I don't know.
So we would be raising fees if we included option C?
Yes, on plan check review, on the building.
That was still raising fees on plan check. Well, the right number at 65.
But that is within the reasonable cost of providing services. You don't need to go to a vote of approval of the PUP 26 and the procedural.
Well, dollar wise, on a $500,000 project, we're talking about raising it how much? Twenty-one, or what? Times 20, times 65 right now.
That works out.
Right now, on a $500,000 project, the plan check for the, I'm sorry, the plan check review fee will be $1,366. When proposing is upping that to 75%, which would be $1,576. So it's an increase of $200 on a project that's over $500,000 for plan check review.
Well, where is number 100 of the standard? You, the, the existing 2001, which we're using now, right?
Right.
Which is $2,101.94, or $500,000.
That's table A, 2001 California Building Code. And he's saying that our policy, so that if you.
That's what's happening now.
That's what's happening now. And they're paying 65% of that 2.01. No, that isn't. Or plan check review, correct?
No, that isn't 65%.
No, 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 no. Where is it?
Plan check, it is plan check.
On your table, you have a title, maybe?
Yes.
To top this, plan check.
So you take the $500,000, 32, 36, by 65%.
I thought you got it these two. All right, guys. I'm doing too much on the machine here.
So I guess, you know, for the.
So that would be to raise.
Doesn't that mean anything with your, your discussion here is the valuation of the buildings where you come up with the product? I guess, obviously, it would also include all the mandated stuff that, uh, we need in the state. A lot of fire sprinklers, most houses are house to go up another eight grand in value. They pay the permit fee on mandated stuff. That's what we asked for. Sweet.
So it's an increase of $300,000. I'm just, I'm just raising the.
Yes, we do. I have to, my, 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 my under, my problem is, my problem is.
I mean, when you add, you know, building houses have, you know, when you, when you add them all up across the board, whether it's a local, when you add the local state, federal, and every territory makes together. So $300 doesn't seem like a lot from those accounting, but when all 27 agencies have a hand in the cookie jar for that 300, it's only $70,000. Times that by 27.
Yes.
So I, I'm not picking on us. I'm just trying to look at it from a little.
And I've limited this fee analysis, uh, presentation simply to the building permit and plan check fees. There are other fees, you know, like you're talking about.
So option A is keeping what we have, just option A. I would do option A in itself.
Second. Will you buy a plan second? Any other discussion at this time?
I'll remember that number. Yeah.
Supervisors in the room.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Martha.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll say it loud, because you started with here and I will remember that during which.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. More serious. Don't take the. Ten, twenty items, now, recent, before the board, instead of Coast County Air Control District Board, consider adopting a resolution that the government board of Coast County Air Control is referring and authorizing the equipment dealer and salvage operation contract agreements for car loan, or your own voucher, senior program and operating chairman signing the resolution. Good morning.
Good morning. Casey with his manacation, uh, on May, which the board cleared notification to ensure the off-road adoption program. We've been approved for $250,000 for this program, uh, which is a tractor placement program. And part of David's contracts for the salvage operations and equipment dealer. These contracts are within the guidelines of the off-road adoption program and through view by the area social board and asking the board to.
Supervisor Carter is going to refuse herself at this time.
Just in case. I won't.
We failed to connect earlier regarding this issue. And, uh, I just, uh, I'm drinking a guli wine, maybe for the glue. That's all. Refuse to accept any premise of that. So that's just my, my, maybe see little three D's or the big old hole inside the rock. Which is just disrupting the wrong rock. It's just. Pleasure, the board.
Uh, no, you could adopt the.
Do it by Marshall, second, Andrew. The other station. Your problem.
Supervisors in the room.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Martha.
Aye.
Andrew.
No, that's 311, uh, 3011. 311.
Three one. Oh, oh, three one one, it's not a big half. All righty, thank you. Now may I reset? Resets from the air pollution board and reconvene as board supervisors. Do we want to, uh, reset? They said we're five minutes in, it's sacked.